Adrianne Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Monday, June 5th, 2023, at 5:30 PM in the historic federal building for the purpose of conducting a work session on Achieve It and Imagine Dubuque progress updates.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for June 5th, 2023. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance for the session is as follows. Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Thank you. Roussel.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Our work session topic is Achieve It and Imagine Dubuque Progress Updates. I'll turn it over to Assistant City Manager Cory Burbach.
It is Achieve It too, isn't it? Not Achieve It.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Now we've all learned something.
Now we know, yes.
Perfect. Good evening. Cory Burbach, Assistant City Manager, and I've got a team with me tonight from the City Managers Office and the Planning Services Department. We're going to tag-team this one this evening for you. And hopefully by doing that, we'll show you how we are breaking down the silos between some of city plans and really being more intentional about integrating the work we do. So we're going to kick off this evening talking about the Achieve It software. And every time you hear us say Achieve It, really think of it as a tool that we can use to present information to you. About a year ago, back in June of 2022, we recommended a contract with Achieve It to you, and we told you that we were going to do four things with that contract. First, we were going to break down those silos between all of our city plans and get better about reporting on those. You know that for City Council Goals and Priorities, we have a quarterly reporting process that we do. Imagine Dubuque has an annual process, and some of our other plans have different cadences, but we don't tie those together in a nice package. That's understandable for you or members of the public. Second, we were going to align reporting of council goals and priorities and really focus more on how those priorities contribute to the community-level outcomes that you all have identified under each of those eight goals that you have. Third, we were going to continue our work to become more data-driven in our day-to-day decision-making process, and that can be applicable for staff in our daily meetings as well as for you all when you're making policy decisions. And fourth, we were going to be more proactive about using the plans that we have, which are informed by community input, to do things like go after grant opportunities, really mining into the input that we've received to figure out where we should be headed next. So we're going to start this evening's presentation focused on your goals and priorities and that piece of the puzzle. We're really going to focus on what you see both in the handout on the right-hand side of the page, which is your directive to us to become a more equitable community of choice, and part of that becomes, happens by becoming a more data-driven organization. And then on the left-hand side of the screen, you see the City Manager's philosophy. And in that document, he also talks about being more data-driven in the decisions that we make as an organization. The handout that you see on your screen now shouldn't look like a surprise to any of you. This is what comes out of your annual goal-setting every year. What is on the first page of that document, if you think about the four-page handout, is your big-picture vision for the community and the eight goals that you've defined. Now typically, when we wrap up goal-setting, we jump right to the rest of that document, which is those priority projects, management progress, major projects, what are we going to do in the next year, which is really important. But what we as staff have been working on as we've played with this software over the past year is, why do we do any of those projects? So when we have a project like the Central Avenue Master Plan Implementation, for instance, that project lives under robust local economy. And what is very easy to do when you're reporting out on whether or not we've achieved your goals is to check a box that says, yes, we did it, or no, we didn't. But our goal and some of the material that we're going to share with you tonight and lead you into your goal-setting in August is to really be able to talk about what was the impact that that project had on the community and had on that goal of a robust local economy. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Abhishek Rai, who's going to talk to you a little bit about what the staff side of things looks like, and then we're going to play with a live demonstration of the tool in a little bit before we jump into Imagine Dubuque.
So to move towards this initiative, to move this initiative forward, the first thing we did was form the data and outcome-based decision-making team with the aim of quantifying the community-level outcomes defined in the City Council Goals and Priorities Plan. And also, the broader objective of the team is to work towards incorporating data-driven decision-making in all levels of the city government. The team is facilitated by the Assistant City Manager, and it consists of several department managers and other members of the leadership team as goal champions who coordinate activities and make decisions regarding their goals and make decisions of how we can quantify those goals and outcomes, and also data experts who assist goal champions set data policies and structures among several other data-related activities. And data owners, and finally, the data owners who just manage data in the organization and upload it into the Achieve It system. Several department managers serve as goal champions in the team, and every city council goal has at least one member of the leadership team assigned as a goal champion. The goal champion team also has our guides for the North Star Plans, like the City Council Goals and Priority Plan and the Imagine Dubuque Plan. And these goal champions make decisions about quantifying these plans and tracking performance on these plans using the Achieve It software system. Every North Star Plan has at least one data expert assigned. These data experts aim to quantify performance data and track progress on the accomplishment of all the North Star Plans. As our North Star Plans include the City Council Goals and Priority Plan, Imagine Dubuque Plan, as well as the Climate Action Plan, Equitable Poverty Reduction and Prevention Plan, Arts and Culture Master Plan. Also, we have organization-wide data experts who provide expertise in the specific domains. For example, we have our Chief Information's Security Officer who suggests and makes recommendations about data security. So we have those domain-specific organization-wide data experts also in our team. Now, what does this team actually do? The team was involved throughout this year in the implementation of the Achieve It software, as well as we implemented these plans into our software, and we linked them together, which we'll discuss in detail in further. But we also undertook some other initiatives such as development of an Achieve It governance policy for optimum utilization of the software system. We also started discussing our outcome data with the leadership team internally to create a data-driven organization culture, and we also continued, the team continued to look at the data through the lens of equity, which is an important aspect of the project. I'll pass this over back to Cory to continue with the Achieve It software implementation.
This is where you're going to test my tech skills. See if I can handle this one. All right, so you all have seen a version. I'm going to open one more window real quick. So the last quarterly Council Goals and Priorities report that you all have seen looked something like this. And what we have given you at this point is a PDF version of a dashboard. That is certainly something that we're looking for feedback from you all. I think it's an improvement from what we used to do. Those old Microsoft Word documents, it's a little bit more visual. If you are interested, we can also build custom dashboards into this. So it's something that we could build a City Council custom dashboard that would let you have a little bit more interactivity besides scrolling through that PDF. But I'm going to show you the staff side of things for today, just to give you a sense of what we can do with the tool. So, go tree view. The way these plans are built is they're stacked. So we're looking at City Council Goals and Priorities right now from last year, as an example. And I'll give you just a real brief overview. We have each of the eight goals under each one, and then you can see all these numbered boxes. These are all your management and progress and priority projects, and we've tied each one of those up to a goal. What we can start to do then is to drill down and to look at the outcomes that you've identified. So when you go through a goal-setting with Lyle Summick every August, he asks you, well, what does it mean for Dubuque to have a robust local economy? And you give him typically five or six community-level outcomes for each item. Then we keep drilling down, and we can see under each of those outcomes what are the projects that are supporting that. So this is the staff dash view, and we're building one of these dashboards for each of the plans that Abhishek talked to you about. And those dashboards, once we get them built, can talk to each other, which is the really exciting part, for me at least. So these dashboards, the staff view, then lets us go in at any point, if we're in a meeting and Mike asks us, well, what's the status of XYZ project? We can really easily pull that up. As opposed to the quarterly reports that you're used to, these are near-real-time. So we ask staff to update them at least quarterly, but more often if information is there. And then what that information feeds is this. This is your dashboard that you've seen in PDF version. What it allows us to do is look at a big picture of all your goals and priorities here on top, but then divide those goals and priorities up by each goal and look at that status report for them. Here's the really fun part for me. So if you're in the interactive tool, you can click on any of these donuts. So I'm going to click on this dark green one, which is the Achieve donut. It tells me there's 10 activities under robust local economy that staff have completed in the last year. And then you can go in and see, there's a narrative that goes along with each of these and see what those are. So it's a really easy way, if you're fielding a question from a resident, and you say, well, I don't know if that project is done or not, let me ask staff and get you some The Achieved piece of the donut is really important. What's been more interesting for me to look at, as we've played around with this for a few months, is this red bar of not achieved and this yellow section of off-track. Now, when we started doing this, there was a little hesitancy from staff, like, ooh, can I tell them it's off-track? And the answer is, the information that goes along with it has been incredibly valuable. So we can very easily click on that section of the donut. It'll tell us everything that's off-track, and if we go into the narrative on these, it'll tell us why. So for some, there's a very realistic reason. For instance, some of the items that you identified as priorities required funding that was not allocated in the budget. So at that point, staff would enter off-track, progress won't be made until funding is available. Or maybe we went after a grant, and we didn't receive the grant, so we're looking for another funding source. That's really helpful information for us to have. Sometimes there's a different reason, whether it is construction delays, we can't get the materials that we need, all sorts of things, that if we can pull that up quickly and see what projects have pain points in them right now, we can start to be a lot more intentional about where we're devoting staff time and resources to fixing those problems. So this is, again, we can make it interactive, or we can keep it with that PDF version that you all have. But as we look at the outcomes piece of this next with Abhishek, what I really, I think staff's request to you all as council, as council has been going into your goal-setting, if it's something you can keep in the back of your mind, is we've tied each of these projects to an outcome now, and we started to identify where we have great data on the community-level outcomes that we can share with you. So when you, if we stick with robust local economy as an example, you identified that one of your intended outcomes is that the work we do reduces unemployment rate in our Black community and raises the Black family median income. We have that data now that we can show you, so you can say, have we made progress on this or not in the last year? And if not, where might we need to reallocate resources? Staff have identified some of those outcomes, where either we don't have data, or I would define the outcome as a little bit softer and harder to get our arms around. So as you go through goal-setting, you'll hear some of those questions from staff through Mike and I of, what do you really mean when you say, fill-in-the-blank outcome? And we're really hoping that we can work together with you to get some better direction and then come back and really mine that data so we are bringing the right recommendations to you. So I'm going to have Abhishek show you a little bit of what that outcome-level data looks like at this point.
So we have been working with different departments, different goal champions from different departments, and we have been able to load a lot of, some of the data related to different goals. So for example, as Cory mentioned, robust local economy, the outcome which we identified have the infrastructure amenities to support economic development and growth. So we have been working with the goal champion of the economic development, which is our Economic Development Director, to identify the data which is available. So for example, this is something which was available with us, which is the investment in industrial park, housing and downtown small-business facades, which was readily available with our Economic Development Department, and we are able to quantify that and load it into the system and visualize it. And this is also an interesting aspect about Achieve It. It encourages us to think in terms of either baselines or targets. So for example, here, I have not put the targets, we are still working on putting the targets and setting them, but I'll show you the example for the next outcome. Is the next outcome we were tracking was reduce income and unemployment gap for Black residents. And here we have a target where we have to reduce it, the unemployment gap of Black residents against the unemployment gap, unemployment rate of rest of the Dubuques population and reduce that gap. And we can see here, this is some of the information provided by our Shared Prosperity, it's Department of Shared Prosperity, where they have identified this information. And there's also a description which answers some of the questions where the information came from. And we can see, this is the line, and it's always, for the unemployment rate, it's always the goal to reduce the unemployment rate, so it should be going down towards and matching the red line while the income gap, our bar should rise towards so that we can reduce the gap between the income of Black families and the median income of families in Dubuque. So this is some of the examples, as well as we have also been given, we also were able to identify some of the data related to the living wage, which the Office of Shared Prosperity has worked on trying to define and find data on, and we have been able to load it into the system. So it provides some great visualization. And I think I should go back to the presentation, because we can talk about data, and we're trying to, it's still a work in progress, I would say, where we have been able to load a great amount of data about robust local economy and how fiscally responsible we are, as well as our partnerships we are building, but we are still working on some of the other outcomes related to other goals with goal champions. It is a big initiative. So Cory already talked about what does Achieve It do. And I would also go back to, this is not just an implementation for the City Council Goals and Priority Plan, we are also implementing, we implemented two City Council Goals and Priority Plans, the 2021, 2023, and 2022, 2024 in the last one year, as well as the Imagine Dubuque Comprehensive Plan. And we are on track on implementing the Climate Action Plan, the Power Reduction and Prevention Plan, and the Arts and Culture Master Plan, as well as we have inside the future for the next City Council Goals and Priorities. So we have all this information in the system as we go ahead. I already showed this tour about the data, and let's see what's next. An update from Imagine Dubuque, so I'll invite Jason to come and talk about Imagine Dubuque.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Jason Dube. I'm an Assistant Planner in the Planning Services Department. I'm here with my colleague, Assistant Planner Chris Happ Olsen. We bring regards from Wally Wernamont, Planning Services Manager, who is home with walking pneumonia, but he's taking medicine and getting better. So as Abhishek and Cory mentioned, Imagine Dubuque is one of the plans that is part of the Achieve It sort of ecosystem that's being developed. And it was put into this great document in 2017, but now it's living in the Achieve It system, which will really allow it to continually be updated. As a reminder, this is our city's comprehensive plan, and it's not just for City of Dubuque Government, it's really for our whole community. There are numerous partners acting to help us implement it, and it covers many different aspects of our city and community, each of which are contained in a category. These are the chapters of the plan, and each category contains not just the recommendations that we focus on, but also a lot of other information about demographics, traffic, lots of information about Dubuque and why we're making these recommendations. And this plan, which was developed with the involvement of the community, actually included engagement of over 6,000 different Dubuqueers, and together they shared ideas, generating over 12,000 different ideas that got distilled into this plan, into these seven category themes, which contain 110 different community recommendations. So as you can see here, there was a lot of engagement at community events, but there were also multiple focus groups with community leaders, and this plan, you know, has the buy-in of Dubuque citizens. The way that we're implementing Imagine Dubuque is through what we call a collective impact model, where city leaders, city staff, community members, all are working toward this common agenda of these specific social problems. It's sort of a hierarchy, and at the top are the connectors, who are department heads who lead one of each of the seven different planned categories. Connectors work with coordinators, and coordinators are responsible for one or more recommendations and monitoring the progress and providing updates related to those recommendations. The seven categories break down to 32 different subcategories, and those contain the 110 plan recommendations. And champions are individuals, groups, initiatives that relate to one or more of the recommendations, and they can be volunteers, or they can be staff at a community partner. We're always looking for more champions to help us further the goals of the plan. So when the Imagine Dubuque Plan began to be implemented in 2019, we developed a set of status definitions for how we would track the progress of the plan. And these are the terms and the definitions that we had been using previously. You're probably familiar with these from our previous presentations to you. These status definitions had to be converted into the new terminology and definitions that the Achieve It system uses. So instead of needs resources, getting started, underway, or complete, ongoing, we're using the Achieve It terminology, not started, on track, off track, at risk, achieved. And that has led to a little bit of, the terms are not exactly the same. So when we made the conversion, what we found is that a number of recommendations that we would have called getting started under the previous plan, where, you know, there was some initial movement, but not sort of a full-scale effort to bring them into the underway category. A number of those getting started recommendations kind of bumped up and now are called on track. So they've kind of gotten lumped up with a number of recommendations that previously would have been underway. So you'll see that when we compare where we were last August when we presented to you, the picture seems like we've made a lot of progress, and we have, but part of the difference is the definitions and the terms that we're using. So as you'll see here, the vast majority of the recommendations have been rated on track, because that definition is kind of broader than what we had before with underway and getting started. So just a quick aside here, I'll show you the Imagine Dubuque dashboard, and it's very similar to what you've seen with the City Council Goals and Priorities. We have the total plan progress at the top, and then it's separated into the seven categories with an overview of the category, and then the subcategories, which list the text of the subcategory, the status, who it's assigned to, and whatever the last comment was. And so we first used Achieve It as our update tool in April, so most of these updates are covering the period from last August through the end of March. So to get into the individual categories briefly, the first one is Economic Prosperity, and Jill Connors, the Economic Development Director, is the connector for that. And we've identified just one highlight from each category, not necessarily the one that's the biggest standout, but something that we thought would be good to share. For Economic Prosperity, this category contains a recommendation related to entrepreneurship. And this year, the Economic Development Department and the Office of Shared Prosperity have received a grant from the National League of Cities to work on entrepreneurship in our community, and they are partnering with efforts in Dubuque County and the Innovation The Sustainable Environment category has Gina Bell, the Sustainable Community Coordinator, as the connector. And in this category, the Mowing to Monarchs program has been extended to 2024. This is related to our recommendation of partnering to increase local native plants, pollinator habitats, and edible landscaping. And this program has been going since 2020, and in the first three years, 180 Dubuque County landowners have converted 120,000 square feet of turf grass to prairie. Cory Burbach is the connector for the Social and Cultural Vibrancy category. One of the recommendations is to assess options for improving trash collection in downtown Dubuque, and as you're well aware, the citywide effort to roll out new tipper carts is well underway. Alexis Steger, Housing Community Development Director, is the connector for livable neighborhoods and housing. And thanks in part to new housing financial incentives, numerous housing developments are underway in some stage or another, including the 390-unit Fox Hills apartment complex. The Community Facilities category has Gus Ahoyas as the connector, city engineer. And one of the recommendations here is to monitor market conditions and strategically implement the Chaplain Schmidt Island Master Plan. implement the Chaplin Schmidt Island Master Plan and other emerging plans. And so the city was awarded $3 million, the Destination IO grant, to go toward constructing the amphitheater on Chaplin Schmidt Island. Ryan Nuckey, Director of Transportation Services, is the connector for transportation and mobility. And there are several recommendations related to complete streets, of which the RACE grant that the city received will be designing and eventually implementing. Wally Wernamont is the Planning Services Manager and connector for land use. One of the recommendations is to allow for appropriate expansion of existing industrial parks, as identified on the future land use map. So in the Dubuque Industrial Center South, the Simmons Warehouse is being developed right now to allow for the expansion of the Simmons Pet Food Factory, and the city is working to annex a small portion of land that will be used for that development. So from here, we'll continue to utilize our website for marketing, outreach, and reporting. We're in a little bit of discernment about whether we need to continue to have a separate website, or whether the Achieve It capabilities will allow us to use the City of Dubuque website to display the progress that we use our other website for. But we'll continue to reach out to community partners and identify champions and others in the community who are making progress. Like Abishak has described, with Achieve It, we're able to connect the city's plans and your goals to identify areas where there can be some synergy. And we've been budgeted some funds to assist targeted recommendations. Right now, we're in the progress of working with University of Dubuque professor to implement some air quality monitoring. So that's one of the goals that has kind of languished, but we're working to further that. So thank you, and I'll turn it back to Abishak.
Yeah. So we just wanted to end with, while we are implementing all these plans in the Achieve It system, we want to show how it links together and how we produce, I would say, how effective it is in linking plans, and also, which is very beneficial to us in identifying patterns. Linking plans together helps connect efforts and initiatives with similar characteristics, or help achieve the same goals. And it can also help identify patterns. And we link plans in Achieve It using tags and tagging. A large part of our initiative for the entire year has been how to link these plans together, so it's not a siloed reporting. So for example, there's an Imagine Dubuque recommendation to continue to implement the 50% by 2030 Climate Action Plan, Climate Action and Resiliency Plan, as well as this year, we have priority of Climate Action Plan implementation. Now, if we want to get this information from these two plans, how do we link it together? And this is done through, we did this through creating a tag called the Climate Action Tag. And once the plan is linked, it helps us produce reports or custom dashboards very easily. For example, we can just search in the system, in the staff view, Climate Action, and all the items related to the Climate Action Plan is generated and is queried out, as well as in Imagine Dubuque. But this would be very beneficial, once we start linking more and more plans, and we will start identifying more patterns of how maybe the Arts and Culture Master Plan, how does that relate to how those efforts relate to Climate Action, or how does the Poverty Reduction and Prevention Plan relate to Climate Action? So once we implement those plans and we link them together, it can produce a report based on the area where we are making initiative, and I think that could be very beneficial for data analysis, as well as recognizing patterns and making decisions. So this is the end of our presentation. I hand back to Cory.
Thank you, Abishak and Jason. So as we wrap up, we wanted to make sure that we were leaving plenty of time for questions and conversation with you all, because this tool can really be built in whatever way is the most helpful for you and for staff. We have a great support staff at Achieve It that's helped us build some of those custom dashboards, and I'm interested to hear what would be helpful for you all. And I would say that our second goal this evening was absolutely not to tell you the status report of everything in those plans, although Jason picked some really good ones to highlight as examples, but really share with you the depth that's available in this tool going into your goal setting, so that any way that we as staff can help you go into that informed and ready to make some tough decisions, we are there to help you do that. So with that, we'd be happy to answer questions.
Excellent. Well, thank you all very much for the presentations. I'll open for questions. Yeah.
Gosh, thank you guys for this presentation and for the toolbox here that will help us with the data to better assess our progress and the city's progress in all of these goals and objectives. And I totally appreciate the phased-in approach and the different sections that you have created, and I know that that does not happen overnight, and so software implementation is a challenge just by the definition of the word, "software." So I thank you for that. I did want to get back to you about some ideas, but is it possible for us to have like a practice session so that we can actually have a cue sheet as to how to access and what to look for? That could be a little primer for us to kind of navigate. I think that would be very helpful. And then the other question I have is, do the city residents also have eyes on the results of these projects? Because we are, everybody is doing it on behalf of the cities, and you had mentioned, especially for the Imagine Dubuque, where you had over, you know, 6,000 folks help with the creation of that plan, and no doubt there are some still very, very interested in all of the progress. So is there a phased-in appropriate section that can be eyes for the residents as well, and maybe not all the details that, you know, the staff might have, but at least a summary and information for them to see the progress, and also for them to have input? Because that would be important, and that could be a communication vehicle for all of us here tonight.
Yes. So I'll give you two answers to that one. First is, as you were seeing us kind of scroll through these dashboards, each of these boxes that you see, so the description would be a box, and then each of the charts is a box, is a widget that you can embed in a website, super slick. So what we are getting ready to roll out after this evening's work session is, we're going to start with the community-level outcomes, where we have data, and make each of those a live webpage that anyone in the public can access. So we're really excited about that. And then for our partners, that might be very involved in a project. So for instance, if you noticed when Jason was showing the Imagine Dubuque plan, some of the folks reporting aren't city staff, they're some of our key partners, the school district and Greater Dubuque. Those folks we can set up as users so that they can dig into the data that's in there in a more in-depth way as well. So a couple different levels.
Okay. Can this also be used for development agreements and working on Wally's behalf of planning? More specific, but maybe in another phase, if you will.
I think as we, so the cities that we've looked at that really use this tool to its full capability have started to do that. They'll be in a development agreement meeting, and they'll be asking, well, how much are we investing in something? Or they might be in a meeting about leisure services programming and ask, well, how many programs did we offer to that population? The more we put into it, and the more we learn how to do those searches, the more we can use it.
Okay. Thank you. I look forward to learning how to be more intuitive in that research. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Russell.
Thank you, Cory and team. I just want to say that I think the most exciting part is the multi-plan report, and how this allows us, using those tags, to put everything together, because we have so, in the past have had so many plans operating and so many goals, and it's just so great to see them all in one place and how they come together. And I just want to thank you for your work in bringing this to us. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, if I could share an example, one of, I think it's probably the example we shared with you when we signed the contract was around broadband. And you've seen some communities that have done explicitly a broadband master plan, and there's certainly a place for that. But when we started to pull the data on, how much is already in our plans in the Imagine Dubuque plan, talking about land use, and in the Equitable Poverty Prevention Plan, talks about access? And when we can pull all those pieces together, we have a lot of information out there that maybe other cities have put a title on it a little bit differently, but that we can get at, and then we can identify where the gap is and say, now we need to dig into this piece, because that's what's missing. So it's really been already a helpful tool, as we've done some of that multi-plan view.
Ms. Wethel.
So the question, well, a couple of questions. Can you talk about what the conversion of the old system into the new looks like for somebody who does not do queries? How much, going how far back are we able to look at data?
Sure. So we have loaded the current year of City Council Goals and Priorities and the past year of City Council Goals and Priorities. And those two years, if you're familiar with PDF and doing a control find, you can get at everything that you need to. Our older ones are still in Microsoft Word, but I can always pull out if you're looking for something specific.
Great. And then the other question I had, are there standard queries that cities do that we can compare ourselves to, like, organizations?
That's a great question. I would say, so part of, one of the sets of data that we've found generally, that we don't have good data on as we've done this process, is around, y'all have several outcomes that relate to resident satisfaction in some way, whether it's with quality of services or access to a certain type of thing. And so one of the things that is budgeted every other year, I believe, in the city manager's office, is a resident survey. We have not, we're planning on doing that in the next fiscal year, and that survey, there is a national standard for that, that cities ask the same types of things, and then we can benchmark ourselves. And most of the gaps that we have in data around that topic, we would be able to then benchmark ourselves against other cities.
Great. And is this software, one last question, sorry, is this software used across 50 states? I mean, is this software that's common in cities our size for utilization?
I'd have to check if it's in all 50 states, but I know the cities we looked at, and we continue to watch what they're doing, are a variety of sizes, from, I think the smallest I looked at is probably about 10,000 on up. So folks are using it in a number of different ways.
Thank you.
Mr. Resnick, do you have any? Yeah, go ahead.
All right. Thank you very much. So I tell you what, I'm intrigued by the interactive possibilities you mentioned at 5:40 PM. Didn't know if they would be worth all the work to get those done, but you know, that sounds like it might be. I do think the PDFs are an improvement, but I have a question. Do you feel, do you feel that the PDFs are better, with the graphics and everything, to actively reflect the true picture of achievement? You know, instead of, I mean, is it better to have data and a narrative, or these pie charts?
I would say from a staff's, so the PDFs that we have now have the pie charts and the narrative, so we haven't lost anything. We have both. I will tell you that from a staff's perspective, we've noticed a couple things. This is a lot easier process to get staff to complete for you all, and that means I'm getting more timely information, which I think is helpful. But certainly, once you all have a chance to play with it, you let me know, and we'll make adjustments.
All right. Thank you. And I tell you what, maybe it's just me, the way that we have Achieve It, it always looks like Achieve ELT instead of it. Achievelt, and people might look at that. I went to their website, and they don't do that same font that we do. Anyway, I didn't know if we wanted to think about that for better citizen understanding. And lastly, I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the Imagine Dubuque focus. I mean, we put the citizen input front and center, and as you mentioned, 6,000 residents with a lot of great ideas, and we're doing exactly what we should be doing, putting the citizen's voice into action. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any others over here? So I have a couple of questions here. So first of all, thank you again for this presentation. This is actually really great to see how this can work. And you would, so you asked, and Mr. Resnick just said that he would be interested in having the more interactive. I am wondering, though, I mean, we're talking a cost in staff time to put something like that together. Is it an easy thing to do for us, that we could have that interactive approach?
Do you know what? It actually wouldn't be a big staff time, because the PDF version that you're getting is essentially just saving a very scrolling webpage to a PDF for you. So it's really built, we'll just have to play with how you want to access it.
Yeah.
And I know some of you are more paper-friendly, some of you are more computer. That would give you the ability to access it either way, so it's not, and everybody has to be the same.
Yeah. I'm with Mr. Resnick on this. I would love to have the more interactive version, at least the capability to see that, especially as we start to think about goal-setting and getting into what we're doing in August. It would really be nice to be able to dig through this a little bit more on our own time, in our own way, without having to ask, you know, think of exactly what the specific question is to ask you to get back to us, or to ask the city manager. And I think that would be really nice to have that capability, if it's easy enough to institute.
We'll see what we can do.
Okay. And then the one piece that I heard, that, you know, it's funny when you talk about software that can work really well, there's always a human involved, and there's always some human process that can really get in the way or bottleneck it. And I was curious, you mentioned that we've got people inputting this stuff on at least a monthly or quarterly basis, I think you said?
Yep. Quarterly. For each plan, we can set our own targets, for council, Goals and Priorities, and Imagine Dubuque, we're working on quarterly.
Quarterly, yeah. Is it working? Because that's a hard thing to do. I mean, when you get a staff as large as ours, right, you have to make sure you get everybody on that same page of putting those things in, and not to throw anybody under the bus, I'm just asking, because that's a real challenge sometimes, is to get that data inputted.
Yeah. I won't throw anybody under the bus. I would never do that. But I'll tell you that what I can do really easily is go in here and click on, I have a donut that you all won't see that's overdue, reports, and so it's really easy for me to see if we are missing information, where the disconnect is. And, you know, the perfect example that happened last month when I was pulling reports, and I thought, well, that's odd, and it was because we had lost a staff person and that reassigned the items.
Oh.
So that wouldn't have got caught that quickly in our old Microsoft Word documents.
Sure. Yeah. So it's actually better than we had before in terms of getting the data in?
From an admin side, I believe so.
That's great. Okay. Wonderful. Well, any other questions before we wrap this up? All right. Well, this is very helpful. I'm very excited to see this capability, and I'm with Ms. Russell on this, you know, when you can start to mash things together, to be able to really start to dig into how it's really looking, when you look at multiple different indicators of the goals that we have, this is exciting to have this in place. So thank you very much for the presentation, everyone, and we appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Well, there being no further business in the work session, we will be adjourned until the regular meeting.